We're going to do the zoning board first. And so the first thing we need to do is a call to order. So I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Berry zoning board. And we would ask you to stand for the pledge of the flag right over here. The pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So my name is Luanne Tierney and I am the chairperson of the Berry zoning board. So we're going to take roll call and I'm going to introduce everybody since we have a bit of a crowd. This is Rick Root. He's our alternate, but right now he's going to be voting tonight because we are five. Okay? This is Cindy Burnside over here, Dick Miller, and Charlie Swan. Okay? So that's our Berry zoning board. Just a quick reminder about public participation in the meeting. We have our business meeting first and we are going to get to the two variances and then we are going to get to some new and old business. So public participation takes place during the public hearings or at the end of the meeting, you know, I can ask anybody if they have any further concerns or whatever. I can give you a minute or two there. Okay? But as I said, we have a pretty heavy agenda tonight. So our first order of business is approval of the minutes from the July 16th meeting. I don't think they all have them yet. And if you have anything that needs to be changed, added. I think we all received these usually. Lee is good enough to send them out in our email, so we should have gone over them anyways. Okay? If there's nothing, then a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll second that.
I'm not making the motion, I'm asking.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Dick Miller's making a motion, Charlie Swan second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, next order of business is our public hearing. First let me review the application for the Berry Grange Hall and then we'll start our public hearing. So we have an application for the Berry Grange Hall. It's a two-part application. The first part is we just are doing the area variances and then the planning board will be doing the site plan review. Okay? So and both of these were sent to the county. We reviewed it in July, sent it to the county in August, and they reviewed both the site plan review and the area variances. And they recommended both for approval. The request for the area variances on the Grange Hall, this is in Berry Center, 11.7 feet. So the amount of the variance would be, they have 11.7 feet. So they're requesting a variance on the north side of three feet, three inches. On the south side, 12 feet. Rear setback, they need a variance of 48 feet. The front setback is 53 and three quarters feet from the building and 61.3 feet from the porch. And they need a variance of 147 feet from the, for the lot width, for the street frontage. Okay? So those are the requested variances. I did want to read one thing that the county said. The proposed use of this building is relatively low impact in nature and may be a good fit for this unique situation and the building. And as I said, they recommended unanimously for approval of the area variances. Theirs is just a recommendation though. Okay? So we get to decide tonight what we're going to do with that. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for the Berry Grange Hall. So anybody would like to make any comments, questions, input on the board too, I mean, speak up.
I'd like to see her have that. I think it would be advantageous for us to start using our buildings. My name is Robin Naka and I live at 4285 Old Orchard Road.
Thank you, Robin. I'm sure she appreciates your support. Yes?
Hi, I'm in favor of her having that. I think it's a good use. I think it's a benefit to the town.
Thank you. And your name is?
Janice Bervostky.
Thank you, Janice. Anyone else? Silence.
How many minutes go on the subject?
The subject and the parking and all that, that will be part of the site plan review. So that's, the planning board will be taking care of that later. Okay? So if you have any questions about that, that would be, our job is just the area variances. So no further questions, comments? Okay, then I guess I can close the public hearing and we can entertain a motion here.
Motion to?
Whichever. We can, a motion to grant the variances. And I'm not going to read them all over again, but Lee has a copy and she's going to grant the variances on each side of the building as needed.
I think we went through that whole, the last meeting that we had in July.
We did do the seeker.
We did the seeker. I think it was low impact at that point.
Correct. There was no environmental impact, yep.
Well, I make a motion that we accept it.
I second the motion.
Okay, a motion was made by Cindy Burnside, seconded by Rick Root to allow the area variances in the amount that we have written here that were accepted by the county.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion is carried. New business. New business, we have another variance and I've got to find my sheet. This is Mr. Kenward. Mr. Kenward is sitting right back there in the corner. Okay? I have a picture of his property. I don't know if all of you have had time to look at it. There's the property right there. Okay? It's 14170 Maple Street. It's a residence. He is requesting an area variance of 18 feet and three quarters, yeah, 18 and three quarters feet for the purpose of a handicap ramp. Okay, for his wife needs to use a handicap ramp. Any of you want to see, do you want to see what the property looks like or anything? It's on my tablet. I want to add too, that if you look on this picture, he's also indicated to me that the ramp will start back here. He's going to make that into a door. Okay? And then it'll come forward and then out across the front of the building. So it will start back here. So he's really trying to accommodate the best he can to keep it as far away from the road as possible. We're required to have a 75-foot setback and he has, I think, 56 feet with the ramp.
56, 81 currently, and a little.
Yeah, 75 is required to hear.
To the end of the road.
Uh huh.
Somehow.
I don't know what that is.
So he's short.
Well, it's 20, yeah. There's another 33, yeah. So that is what he's requesting. So the five questions that we need to ask real quickly and then we'll do our seeker in making this decision whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Mr. Kenward, you have a picture of your ramp. Do you mind if I just show them what the ramp's going to look like? It's a nice looking, you know, it's a metal ramp.
Yeah, thank you.
So here's the ramp.
Okay.
Oh, this is like the one that we just did on Culver Road.
Thank you, sir. Second question, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Third question, whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Okay? So those are the questions we ask when we're considering an area variance. I'm going to be doing the seeker and then we'll open the public hearing. So in the impact assessment, we have to ask the following questions. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use planning or zoning regulations?
No.
No or moderate to large impact? No or small, correct? Is that everybody in agreement? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land? No or small. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. I missed one. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. If anybody disagrees, speak up, okay, all on our board here. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. There's not too much mass transit here. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies? Nope. Waste treatment, utilities?
No.
Mr. Kenward, where's your septic? Is it on the back of your house?
There.
Yeah. Okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of an important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Two more. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, flooding or drainage?
No.
No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? We would say no. Okay, and that we have answered no to all of those questions. Could I have a motion that, we have a negative seeker here, that there is no, there's no large impact, so just, Lee word it for me. I'm tongue-tied right at the moment.
Any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Okay, can we have a motion to that effect?
I make a motion.
Okay, Rick Root's going to make a motion, second? Charlie, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion is carried. And at this time, I'm going to open the public meeting for public comments on Mr. Kenward's handicap ramp. Anybody have any comments? Questions? Okay, here we go then. So we can entertain a motion here to either approve the area variance of 18.75 feet in the front of his house for the purpose of building a handicap ramp.
True.
Okay, so do I have a motion from you? Okay, motion from Dick Miller to approve the 18.75 feet for a variance for the handicap ramp?
Second.
Cindy Burnside, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Mr. Kenward, you're all set. Okay? All right, so new business, more new business, couple things. There is a fall workshop somewhere here. I have, oh, here it is. A fall workshop. If anybody on our board here wants to attend Wednesday, November 14th, this is a flyer. Okay? Take a look.
Local.
Batavia.
County.
Batavia. So we can pass that around if you need a copy. We'll leave, well, our own copies have been made. Okay? I think it's important that all of us, and for my sake and for the sake of our board as well, to just remind ourselves of what our duties are as the zoning board of appeals. And this comes from the state website. And it states that the board of appeals is an appellate body. That means for appeals only. Okay? It has no original jurisdiction. In other words, we don't make any of the ordinances. We just review and appeal. Okay? So deciding, hearing and deciding appeals from and reviewing any order requirement, decision interpretation, or determination made by the administrative official charged with enforcement of any zoning ordinance or local law. That administrative official in our case is Shelley. Okay? She is the code enforcement officer. So in other words, if your request doesn't meet our ordinances, then your appeal comes in written form to us. Okay? There's another important part of this. In other words, in the absence of an application to the building inspector for a building permit or certificate of occupancy, in the absence of a denial of such application by him or her on the grounds that the proposed use violates the zone ordinance, and in the absence of an appeal from such decision, the board has no jurisdiction to make any ruling or declaratory judgment as to the meaning. In other words, we can't, you can't come to me and say, "This is our zoning law, interpret it for me." Okay? I can only interpret as I have a specific application in front of me with numbers on it and things like that. Okay? Because I can't just, "Oh, what if this happens?" That doesn't work. Okay? We have to know the specifics because everyone is treated differently. The other problem with that is I'm only one person and we have a board of five members. Okay? It's not my decision, it's the board's decision. And so it needs to be clear that any of that interpretation sort of thing has to be done after a specific application. Okay? All right, any questions? You guys on that?
No.
Any questions? Okay. I sent you the information, so. Third thing under new business. Okay, I have some material here. John Metzler and this is from William Naka and Alexander Naka, and these are about our windmills and our wind ordinances. Lee has put this into digital form. And so we'll either give you a hard copy of this at your request or you'll get a digital copy. And I would ask you to review this. And I think it's, they're pretty thick. I just got this tonight too. So we're going to need time to review it and we'll have to discuss it at the next meeting. But keep in mind, because this one does request a written response, or is it say, kind of provide an answer on each proposed regulation and topic within this revision and writing to me. The problem with us doing that is it's a conflict of interest for us to have a strong opinion on these ordinances because we're the ones that are going to make a decision on appeal. So you don't want us making the rules and then deciding if we're going to allow an appeal. You know, it's kind of, so that's not our job, is what I'm saying. But I think it's still important that we review it, discuss it, but like I said, they're pretty lengthy and it might take a minute. Okay? So what's that?
Are there going to be copies?
There's digital copies and she will email it to you.
Okay.
And if you need a hard copy, then you need to request it and we'll get you a hard copy. Okay?
Can I ask you a question?
Can you wait? Just let me do the old business, John, and then I'll let you talk, okay? Old business. And it's good that the planning board is here because we had a resolution in the December meeting. I asked Lee to put this on our agenda just as a reminder to all of us, recommending that the town board and planning board review or create a process for subdivision of property. Some of our difficulties in having to allow or consider variances has to do with people subdividing their property without finding out what the ordinances are first. So then they create a property that's non-conforming. Okay? So in order to prevent that, we were just asking that the other boards review that and see if it's a, if it's a good idea to create a process for that so that that doesn't happen as often. Okay? You guys remember that? Yep. Yep. Okay, so that concludes all of our business. And I did say at the end, if anybody needs to speak for a minute or whatever, we would listen. So, John?
What we're asking of you, Ms. Tierney, is that you carefully consider in all decisions the impact on our town as a whole. I spent a lot of time on the phone with Fish and Wildlife and the Department of the DBC today. And I hand you through a copy of the study from Fish and Wildlife. And if I could reach this one comment to Apex from Fish and Wildlife, if that's okay?
Okay.
And my point is this, East Berry is a flyway for the bulk of truppler swans, for snow geese, and for San Hill cranes as well. Anybody's lived here for 35 years and more can tell you the same thing. We did a few over here and that doesn't include the Canadian geese and the other, the other birds that fly. Also includes bats. But anyway, this is regarding the lighthouse project. What you have to understand is a town, these birds come from this area. And in conclusion, the service is concerned about the proposed location of the lighthouse wind energy project. Contrary to statements in the PSS, the service's radar data indicate large numbers of flying animals using the project area. Based upon that information, the risk to wildlife from operating wind turbines could rise to severe levels. Previously, the service has recommended that the wind energy projects be constructed at least three miles from the shoreline of the Great Lakes to reduce this risk. But a lot of the birds right across East Berry. And it's just another reason for concern, anybody that cares about the environment. Number two, the deforestation that's gone on in Berry the last five years, can we tolerate, can we tolerate more deforestation for staging areas and roadways for turbines and the turbines themselves? There's just so many concerns. There was another geological survey I read earlier this year and it was quite concerned about digging down or blasting 50 feet for these foundations for these turbines. And that there's a lot of bedrock there close to the surface. I mean, the concerns are just, so that's why we, that's why we ask you to carefully consider, consider anything that we give to you. And we're reluctant to hand everything to you, so the paperwork's going to keep coming, I guess. It'll be to you and the planning board both.
Okay, well, thank you for your concern. And as I said, we're going to, we're going to review some of this paperwork because there is a lot of it and you need to think about it. It's not something you can just do quickly. So thank you for your concern. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, motion to adjourn. Who said that? Mr. Miller made a motion to adjourn, second? Charlie, Charlie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody, right? Okay, so I guess we're done, part two, right? What's that?
Okay, this is the meeting, the September meeting for the County Berry Planning Board. And first thing we'll do is carry this question. It's a roll call. So Kurt Douglas.
Wilford Ray. Tom Keeler.
Can you speak up, Jack? I can't hear you and you don't have the names on the who's here. They really should be placed on your agenda so that we have them appropriately to just speak up so we can make them, we can hear them on the board.
Robin, they're out here.
I don't have them on mine.
On the agenda.
They're just on the agenda. It's high in the screen.
Okay, go ahead.
Wilford Ray.
Jean Peglow.
Tom Keeler.
Wes Miller.
Kurt Dudley.
John DePape.
Okay. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the meeting guidelines. And I thought it was a good idea just to go over what the duties included, of what the planning board, what the purpose is. And we, we are strictly a recommendation board that takes site plan reviews, refers them to the county, and then we make a recommendation and review those for approval or denial. The referrals that we receive, every one of them goes to the county and they are decided on by the county. And then some of the referrals that are received by the planning board are not decided on by the Berry Planning Board, they are referred to the town board. For instance, the wind energy issues. Those decisions are totally made by the town board and the planning board only makes a recommendation on those. Again, we're just a referral board and site plan review for other topics other than windmills. Any questions on that? So we have a meeting minutes from the August meeting. Need a motion for those.
I make a motion to adjourn. The last meeting.
I'll say it. The first thing we have on the agenda is a public hearing. So this is the site plan review for the art studio of the Berry Grange Building, which was previously sent to the county on August 23rd. And the county has provided a decision on this, on the site plan review. And I'll just, I'll read that. "The county planning board held an official meeting on August 23rd. At that time, the county planning board submitted its review of the above captioned proposal and voted to recommend approval, subject to meeting stated conditions and modifications." And then it goes about the process if our town planning board does not agree with the county's recommendation. They did, they did offer a couple of recommendations on the site plan review. You got those?
The recommendations, correct?
Yep.
The recommendations that they suggest are, "The site plan shall indicate location of any refuse containers and/or holding tanks on the site, and such location and screening shall be satisfactory to the town Berry Planning Board." The second one is, "Orleans County Department of Health permits shall be granted." And the third, "The agreement between the owner of the site containing the designated parking spaces and the applicant must endure as long as this business is in operation."
So those are the recommendations from the county along with their approval. And we, we have a, we've talked about this several times at the board level and I guess we need, we're ready for public comment. Anybody has any public comment on that? So we need a motion for a resolution for the site plan review for the Berry Grange
Do we need a second for that?
Second, yep.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So that closes the public hearing for the Berry Grange. The next item on the agenda is old business and the solar zoning is the only old business we have. We've gone back and forth with other towns' solar zoning and been talking about this as a board for quite some time. We did seek the advice of Lance Mark, the town attorney, and he provided some comments to the board on the zoning that we have proposed. Does anybody have any new information on that? That they want to share? One of the things that we, we talked about doing was not only getting Lance's input but also getting some input from an attorney that may have some specialized interest in solar zoning because currently our town has no solar zoning whatsoever. So that's something we are going to talk to the, we're planning on talking to the town board about. Did you, did you talk to them about that recently or no? Did you talk to him about that recently, or no?
To Lance?
Or no, to...
No, we had, our last month's meeting was after their meeting, so...
Okay. So I would, has everybody got, Lee sent out just a couple weeks ago, the final draft that we had put together of the solar zoning. So, I'd ask that everybody review that and offer your comments, and we should talk more about that at the next meeting. Anything that you feel we should change? Can you go to the town board meeting and talk to the town?
Yeah, while we have a lot of the public here, they should pay close attention to this zone for the solar, so that down the road, we aren't getting a lot of second guessing, maybe like we are in the wind ordinance. We get time to be here at the meetings and have some input.
Can we have what we've done, can we have that available to them to read over at some point, maybe come here to read over it? Otherwise, they're not going to know what we've discussed here and what we've put in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Well, there will be a public hearing before it gets approved.
Well, there will, but they haven't seen this, they don't know what's in it.
Exactly, if they got out before the public hearing, so they could come put their input at that time.
Right.
And it's very hard to know what to do with various points for energy until you have someone that actually comes in and starts telling you what they want and what they need. So putting a plan together before you have those people in front of you always demands changes and other items to be considered. So it's good to have a format to begin, but you can't call that concrete. You're gonna have to leave places where things can be changed. They're gonna need things that you didn't think about, and the town's gonna come up with things that they feel is necessary. So there has to be a time when you can communicate and set things out so that it pleases everyone and is respectful to all the citizens. Please make sure that's in your notes.
You have to look at what the hazards are and how it's gonna conflict or have effect on the surrounding neighbors and that. You know, I don't know a lot about solar, but I do know that you can't just, you have to wash the panels off, and you can't just wash it with soap and water. It's a special chemical, and I don't know how that chemical, you know, it goes in the soil, and I don't know how long it is, I don't know what about the leaching, you know, down the road. So, there's a lot of homework in that to look into it, but that's the only thing I know that would be a problem.
Well, we reviewed, we're the only town in the county that does not have any solar zoning, so that's a little bit concerning. The others have all gone to the county and gone through their process to establish solar zoning. But we are, we put this together based on other towns in the county, and like I said, I think it's a good idea to have an attorney who's specialized in that.
There's also the, you can take the advantage of places that already have solar in place. I don't know if you wanna go out of state and go to Nevada and that, where they're really relying on solar energy, and just see what they feel should be in place to protect the homes.
I think it would be a good idea to put on the website what we do have as a draft, so that people can review that.
That's a very good idea.
Is it?
Yeah. Sounds good.
So as far as the solar zoning, that's where we stand right now. And Lee can, if you could supply that, Lee's draft to everybody on the board. The next thing on the agenda is a new business, and we have subdivisions. Luen touched on this a little bit, and it seems to be a new problem somewhat that is, has come up because of a particular piece of property in the town. But we have, currently don't have any subdivision wording in our zoning to speak up. I reached out to the county, Sarah in the planning department provided us with a guideline, a couple different things. This is a guideline put out, she gave us the link for a guideline put out by the state, and then this is the Medina Code. And also, she gave us a copy of the Town Albion Code to look at. So, I was gonna have Lee share this with everybody, and we can read through it and provide comments, because it's obvious we should have something that addresses that. Anybody have any questions on that issue?
Who brought that up?
Just the fact that sometimes we realize that parcels are sold in the town after the fact, and that they've been sold already without the knowledge of the planning board or the zoning board, and come to find out, they created somewhat of a difficult situation for the owner without the knowledge of it because of the zoning, so.
I think that that may get a little tricky when you start putting regulations on selling parcels of property that create, what do you call them?
Noncompliant lots.
Noncompliant lots. But say, somebody wants just to sell a hundred acres that doesn't have anything to do with a noncompliant lot, are you, we have to make sure that not every land sale or whatever has to be, come in front of the board.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be tricky.
I, go ahead.
If I may speak, you know, from our, from my standpoint, and what I see is always, you know, we don't want people to buy lots that they think are, that they're able to build on and have a home or a business or something else, and then to find out afterwards that they're noncompliant, and then it's a financial hardship, not only for them, but then it puts the burden on the town to maybe give a variance or, you know, something for a piece of property. So if we have some kind of subdivision rule, then it helps people to be aware of what is a compliant lot in terms of building. Because I do get a lot, you know, some people do call me and ask, which I really encourage them to do that, but not everybody knows enough to do that. So if we do proceed with this, I would recommend also that we put, forgets an ad in the Penny Saver or something like that, to make residents aware of the fact, because it would be a change in zoning, and people perhaps will, you know, not be aware of what they have to do.
So I take it now, people can sell pieces of their land without having to have any town approval?
Correct.
Regardless if it's a half an acre to five hundred, doesn't matter, right? Correct.
And the advantage too, like, a lot of people will buy additional property next to theirs, and this will encourage people to merge the property so that we don't have landlocked pieces of parcel that are not complying with our zoning. And that's also the purpose of, you know, coming before a board, because in other towns, they have sign-offs once they do everything and get the survey and merge it and all of that. But I have that where people buy a couple acres behind them and then want to build a pole barn, but that acreage is landlocked because it doesn't have any road frontage, but they own it. And then they come again, I'm like, oh, you have to merge it in order to get a building permit, and then, you know, they get frustrated because it's a longer process. However, if it's done from the very beginning, it really expels things and flows a little bit more smoothly for the landowner.
So, what is, what would be considered the detriment of having a process? I mean, if you had a process where you had to go through the town to get this approved, there would be people against it for what reason? Added burden? Why would that, why would that, why don't we have a process like that now?
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the reason we don't have a process like that is because we're primarily a farming community, and the subdivision of land is not a common thing in our town, because we have, you know, not very many landowners, such as a town like maybe Ogden, for instance, that is wanting to sell a parcel of...
Small parcels.
Small parcels, big lots.
Big tracts or something like that.
Yeah, for housing development or something like that, so. I'm just speculating, that could be the reason why we don't have anything in our town zoning. I think it would be good to look at some comparative towns, maybe Elba, these are just ideas, but somebody like, a town like Elba or Kendall, some, another town that has similar, you know...
As opposed to like Albion or Medina?
Yeah, because they have more tendency for smaller parcels in those villages, so. Does anybody else have any comments on that?
I guess my comment would just be that if Shelley could be part of the process just to inform them of what the ordinances are, just so that they don't willingly, like, create a problem for themselves. That's my big issue, is I just don't like to see somebody create this problem, and they come and ask us for a variance, and you're like, you know?
Yeah. Most of the processes aren't making that known. You put something in place, how do the landowners and buyers, how do they even know that they have to go to the town to get kind of like a checkoff to say that?
County, we would get to inform counties about the parcels.
Yeah, what John's saying though, is, it's a good point, if you're a person who's gonna purchase a piece of land, how would you know that subdivision zoning is affected?
I might be able to help you. So generally, when a buyer puts in a purchase offer, in that purchase offer, it does say "subject to town, county, or any governing authority approval." When it's like...
Authority there now?
In our purchase offers, according to the Greater Rochester Association of Realtors, and also the Buffalo Association of Realtors, it does say in there that when you're subdividing land or when you're purchasing land. And a lot of times, the attorneys, when they look over purchase offers, generally, they know if there's a subdivision, because when a realtor or anyone offers a part of a parcel, that, those two key words are "part of," tax, map, number, such and such, and the attorney right away thinks, oh, this is being divided, I should be directing to see if this is going to be okay to do that. Hopefully, the attorney won't drop the ball and just let it happen. I also wanted to make comment, don't forget about fly lots. Sometimes fly lots can create a problem all their own, and maybe there should be some zoning on that.
We do have fly lots.
But, and that is a good idea for people that go through Realtors, but a lot of people sell their land privately, and they didn't know that.
Well, it's the attorneys, the attorneys usually pick that up, and they should be asking, but if there's no zoning in place, and if those attorneys know there's no zoning in place in Berry, then they won't. And I do get phone calls from attorneys or their associates asking that question. And at that time, I always explain what a billable lot is, so that they're not dividing property into an illegal, or an unbillable lot, I should call it, illegal, unbillable.
And there's times where there's big giant farms, like we have here in Berry, and people just wanna sell off a house with maybe, maybe they wanna sell off the farmhouse with an acre and a half. So that's a division.
I think the intent is to, is to take parcels that are close to requiring a variance currently, if they're, if the setbacks are tight as it is, and some kind, somehow have some zoning that would make those people aware of the possible problem, right?
Right, and also, as she said, like, maybe a big farmer is selling off just the farmhouse. They don't wanna, you know, they wanna make sure, you know, the big thing is that they got enough side lot and all of that, you know? There's nothing that stops them from creating that uncompliant piece of parcel. So, that's what the subdivision zoning law would do, would help to keep our lots, our newly created lots, compliant.
I mean, you can, you can speak to this too, I'm sure, Cindy, but the obligation of a buyer for doing an abstract title and a lean research and things of that nature, it's a similar process that would carry for the subdivision zoning.
Well, you don't want a seller to create a problem on a buyer either. So if the zoning laws are in place, or, you know, if you wanna sell a house off of a giant parcel, like Shelley said, the zoning law should say, there's, you know, you've gotta get X number of feet, side to side, front to back. So, the attorneys are, like I say, generally, they're, "Mr. Seller wants to divide this property to sell the house, what are your setbacks? What are your side to sides?" And if it's not complying, then the attorney is gonna make an issue out of it with the seller and say, "You can't sell this because you're wanting fifteen feet, you know, as a side to side on a house."
Those zonings are already there. I mean, if the lawyer wants to call Shelley, she'll tell him. But we're talking about something beyond that, you're talking about...
Well, the perfect example is the Grange, who they didn't call. Well, they did, I'm sorry, I say correct, they did call, they just didn't heed what I told them. And it was, I had no, and there was no, there was nothing I could do. I told them, and I'm sorry, I told the attorney, you know, it was the buyer's attorney, I said, "That's, you're making it noncompliant, or you're making it even less compliant." But because we didn't have a process that they had to go through, there was nothing that...
So if we had a process, you would be able to keep them from going more uncompliant?
Well, they couldn't file with the county then. They couldn't sell the property and file with the county until they get the town approval, so that that would keep them from filing, and that would force them to come to the town, which would force them to then follow our rules. There was nothing I could, we could do until after it was done, right? Because then they couldn't do anything with it until they got our approval. But it would be better for them and better for the town to get the approval ahead of time, so.
There's a lot more to that story.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I was just using it as an example, I wasn't trying to be in half anybody, that was not my intention.
So, any other comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman? You know, the things that you're trying to deal with here is basically people doing stuff that they shouldn't do, getting in trouble, and then coming to the town and wanting them to bail themselves, get the town to bail them out of trouble. Why not be in front of that, like what's been discussed here, and put something in place so that you don't let that person get into trouble? And hopefully, everybody benefits by that fact. You know, instead of reacting, we're gonna be positive and set the standard so that You know, instead of reacting, we're going to be positive and set the standard so that everybody follows it and keep everybody, buyer and seller, out of trouble. If you can alleviate a problem, it seems to me that's the best thing that you guys can do.
I think the Grange was going to be a problem no matter what, because it was nonconforming again, right Shelley?
Yes, it was not.
I think this process would have had to happen.
And that was, yeah.
I know you're using it as an example, but.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have solved anything in that case.
Yeah, but my house that I purchased, Torrey Farms had purchased the land and the owner, Laverne Bruning, who is now deceased, he had sold off the land to Torrey Farms right up to the back of the house. And there was nothing to stop it, right? So, my husband and I had to work with Torrey Farms to buy land behind the house. And so that could have been prevented had it been, had there been some sort of a process. That's what we're talking about. It's not just the Grange. We know that the Berry hamlet has a lot of nonconforming properties, we know that. But there's a lot of other things that go on like that. And then they come to us and you're like, you know, you hate, you hate allowing it all the time, because then they get used to allowing it and then, you know, there's no teeth in any of your ordinances.
More to follow on that one. Next on the agenda is the, the County Planning Board. And the County Planning Board was, meeting was held on August 23rd. There were four zoning referrals on the agenda. And I'll just go over those briefly as to what they were. The first one was in the town of, or the Village of Linenville. It was a request for a site plan review for the reuse of existing structure at 15 South Main Street in the Central Business District. If anybody knows where the old grocery store was in the hamlet of the Village of Linenville, there's a gentleman that is going to develop that into a hotel, cafe and retail area. It's the Weber Building, they call it, and it's a three-phase project. He's working on the far north building to start. And he's going to, Phase Two and Phase Three are going to be on the two buildings to the south of that. And that was approved by the, by the county. The second one.
Tom, what was your comments on that?
With the previous procedure of matter resolved, the rehabilitation of a key historic structure should be allowed to proceed. When it's completed, the project will be an important step in the revitalization of the Linenville Central Business District.
They didn't throw any stipulations in there?
They didn't. They did not. They're going to have some, the cape improvements that are in line with the Western Orleans Comprehensive Plan. So that was that one. The next one is the Town of Clarendon, request for amendments to the zoning ordinance. And those were- Proposed amendments to remove the residential minimum lot size in the residential agricultural district for both lots served by public water and lots served by public water and public sewer. All lots in the residential agricultural district will not, district will now be allowed, will now be subject to the same minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. And those, there were some other changes. That was the biggest one, the comments that the county had on that, they approved that. Their comments were requiring an increase in required road frontage on flag lots. Should not be done arbitrarily and should be consistent among applications. The applicant could apply for an area variance if required to have frontage above 30 feet. The town zoning ordinance defines accessory building or structure as being located on the same lot as the principal building or structure.
What's a flag lot? Can you explain what a flag lot is?
What's a flag lot? Look in our definition.
Basically, a narrow strip by the road that flares out.
The shape of the lot is a flag.
So in the front and the little access, yeah.
Here's, here's a flag lot.
Yeah, it's very narrow.
In our zoning, the type of lot commonly flagshaped in configuration in which street frontage is provided by a strip of land which is narrow in relation to the remainder of the lot and which extends from the main body of the lot to the street.
Thank you.
Maybe we should, maybe Clarendon would be a good one to look at for the subdivision, possibly. The next one was the, is the Town of Gaines. And it was a site plan review for special use permit to operate a seasonal business on Ridge Road and Commercial Historic District. And the recommendation was for approval of that. This is- The applicant seeks to use an existing barn for various seasonal uses, including retail sales, auctions and events. The site is surrounded by residences and the Cobblestone Society Museum to the north, wooded land to the east, agricultural land to the south and residences to the west. The site is not located within a flood zone or state certified wetland. Parcel of land enrolled in agriculture district is approximately 300 feet to the north. So this was a site plan review for the building that's located on the south side Route 104, right across from the Cobblestone Church.
The house or the virus, pardon?
The agricultural, the county's recommendations, an agricultural data statement must be submitted and the Gaines Planning Board should be satisfied that the off-street parking requirements have been met. Comments were, with an interpretation from the Gaines Zoning Board of Appeals, that the proposed uses are not allowed in the CH District. This project should be allowed to proceed. The project has the potential to be an appropriate addition to the neighborhood. This approval applies only to the interior of the building and not to any activities outside the structure that are temporary or permanent in nature. It should also be noted that camping was erroneously included as a proposed use. If the applicant does proceed, it should reflect the heightened sensitivity to aesthetics in the area due to the presence of National Historic Landmark, Cobblestone Museum.
I think that's the second time that was brought.
That's the second time I've ever thought.
Yeah, I think they had it. And then lastly, at the county was the Towne Berry, which we've already discussed. Also at the county, there was a notification about the train that is taking place on November 14th in Batavia, which I think everybody got that. I got the flyer right here for that. Did you hand that out, Lee, to anybody?
I usually mail it, but I know I didn't get one.
I think it was emailed.
This is, this one's taking place on November 14th in Batavia, and it's $75 per person for November 6th. It's a train which runs from 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon. I can reach the candidate and get their vote.
Does it include lunch?
I think it does. Lunch and exhibits. Hopefully, it's a hot lunch. At the county, still, the, this meeting took place on August 23rd, but there was a notification about the, at the Carlton Rec Hall, they were going to have a, a public session on the, I believe it's a comprehensive plan for the Lake Shore towns. Probably saw that in the paper. Next in communications are the letters that have been received by the planning board, and there's been several, more than several, lots of letters received by the planning board relative to the possibility of changing our wind zoning in the town. And those are being reviewed by the planning board members. Again, just to be clear, this, this wind energy zoning that currently is in the town is going to be a decision made by the town board. The planning board will only be making a recommendation to the town board on any zoning changes and any decisions relative to the wind energy project. So, the letters that we've received, I think it'd be best if we sent those to the members and had everybody review them and familiarize yourself with what people are concerned with. We, we do have on the agenda for, related to the letters, we do have on the agenda for October to discuss the zoning changes which are being proposed by Apex, and Lance Marcus, our town attorney, will be here to talk about those with the planning board. And this will, it'll just be an informational session to determine, you know, to educate everyone on the proposed changes and to get our feet wet in what's been, what's being proposed. So, obviously, we have the letters from residents to review, and Ben is here tonight from Apex, and I don't know if you want to brief anyone on anything, Ben, or not.
Well, sure, Ben Yasmin, I work for Apex Clean Energy, who's developing the heritage wind farm here in the Towne Berry. And so, we are submitting a formal request to the board to amend your zoning ordinance pertaining to wind as we, along the same lines we discussed informally earlier this year. So, now we're submitting a formal request to the same. And I know we have a time set aside in October to go point by point through that proposal. But to speak very generally about it now, you all know that the wind ordinance that's on the books was passed in 2008. Technology and project permitting has changed in the last decade, and so there are nine items specifically in the zoning ordinance which we would like to update or clarify. Nine specific items, and then also the decommissioning plan, we think warrants a second look more broadly. So, without going too deep in the weeds, that's what brings us to you today.
And again, we're not, we're not going to be voting on anything in October. We're not going to be making any board recommendations to the town board in October. We're only going to be reviewing the proposed changes and having Lance comment on those and talk about it on the board.
We understand we're getting a process to review wind ordinance, and if changes were to be made, it wouldn't happen right away. We do want to understand that that process is going to be ahead of time. We came prepared to discuss it tonight, but I understand that we're on the agenda, so, you know, two questions. First, I understand that we're going to be publishing agendas in the future so that we can, we know what we're preparing for, right? And then, second, we, we want to know beyond that what, what the conversation is going to look like in terms of format, you know? Would the town planning board or town board like to submit questions to us in writing? Is there going to be an open forum? And when, and how can we prepare for that? Whatever information y'all are looking for, we're happy to provide.
Well, I think, I think you're wondering, basically wondering when we could possibly make a recommendation to the board, is that correct?
That's, that's part of it, sure. What the timeline would be, yeah. So, to that point, you know, I understand that there are, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but I understand that there are deadlines, you know? If a formal request is submitted, that, you know, the town has a certain amount of time to review and act. I don't know what those deadlines are, but that's all something that we want to plot out sooner than later.
One second then. So, we, I think, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on the board, but I think it would be a good idea to, to listen next month with Lance and, and review everything after that, after we do that.
At the October meeting?
Yeah.
Will the nine points and any proposed changes be released to the public well advanced in the October meeting?
Yeah. Well, let me, well, before the October meeting.
So, we have a chance to comment?
Well, you're going to have a chance to comment at the public hearing, which we'll have.
We don't know what their proposal is going to be until that meeting. What I'm asking is that we could get, we could get the information before, and then we can work with it, if you know what I mean.
I guess that's.
I think I would like us to know what it is that we can decide what we're doing here, not what we're doing, but I would like to hear it first.
Yeah.
Not get it out to the public and have them, "I want your comments, but we need to do this as a board and make our comments known to them, and then we can open it up to the public." I think to have the public doing it before us, we're not doing our job then. We need to do.
Planning board meeting is a public meeting. So, if they come, if they come to the meeting, they have it the same time we have it. Why, that seems reasonable. They come to the meeting, John, and you'll see it like we see it.
Will there be copies available is what I'm asking.
Copy of works?
Yeah, I think, I don't think that's a problem.
Copies of the proposals?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the problem.
You know, we're coming and providing you with things that we delivered.
I don't see the problem, so they have the proposals right here. We're submitting it to you tonight.
Why don't we just make those available to residents that come to the meeting?
Sounds good to us, yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to comment, and now, do you have voting powers on the board to decide your referrals?
So, the, the.
You vote to do that.
For the, for the wind energy proposed changes, those, this, that would just be a written recommendation to the town board.
Okay, I'm here.
The county, the county would have to review the referral from the town board.
Okay, because I'm asking that anybody who has signed wind leases or is involved with Apex monetarily, that they recuse themselves for many of those, for many of those actions?
We will not be voting on that, John.
He knows, John knows that.
He knows that.
Kind of getting sick of hearing.
But you're going to participate in the discussion.
Yes, we are.
There's no reason not to.
My question is still the same, do you vote proposals and recommendations? Do you go line by line and vote on them, or?
Yeah, as a board, we would vote, vote on the recommendations.
Okay, now, will the people who signed wind leases are in, who are in conflict with, you know, Berry's quote unquote, will they involve themselves in any voting?
No, we, we have, we use, we use this book, it's a basic guide for planning boards and zoning board of appeals in New York State. It's called The Short Course, published by the New York State Planning Federation. And it talks about conflict interest in here, and I can read, read to you what it says about it.
Well, I think Gene answered his question. Her and I have signed leases, and we aren't voting. We're going to abstain. I don't know how much more you want, John.
Okay, that would include Wes then as well.
Why?
Wes, you signed, have you signed wind leases? You haven't signed any wind leases?
You need to get your fix before you just start accusing John.
No, we're not here to attack. I asked you a question.
Why did you ask, why did you ask Wes, not me here, Kurt?
I didn't.
Why did you ask Wes?
Did you, did you sign wind leases?
That's not an answer, that's another question.
But I heard firebomb.
I was just wondering why you asked Wes? Anyone else? Interesting.
I thought he was trying to cut me. Where is Wes? I just, I read it too.
I got a, I got a question before you're looking it up now as I can.
Yep.
Are you setting precedent then for if Apex is proposing changes to the zoning laws, and then you're going to give them the opportunity to present their changes and why? Are you going to allow the, if there's letters in there that are proposing changes, are you going to let, allow those people to voice and discuss their views on the letters?
Well, we're going to have everybody on the board review the letters that were received.
Right, and if, but then if they come up, if you could say, "Well, we reviewed them, and it's all said and done," but are you going to give those people the same right to say, "Well, we would like to present it in a public forum too, of why our proposals are?"
I'm not, I'm not really sure that we'll be, because we're only making a recommendation to the board, I'm not sure we'll be required to do that.
But why would you allow Apex to do that?
All, all the board is going to, all the planning board is going to do here is make a recommendation to the town board, and then the town board is going to go through the process to the county and have a public hearing on the proposed changes.
Okay, so if you're allowing someone that wants to make zoning changes, proposals, and then you allow them to speak and still goes, but, you know, for their changes in their favor, and then someone else is proposing changes, zoning changes, and you say, "No, we can't listen to you," I don't think that's right.
No, I don't, I don't disagree. I think those, I think those people should have a chance to express their concern also. I agree. Does everybody else agree on that?
Yeah. Do we have other proposals for changes?
Well, we have, we have letters from residents.
You have letters from residents now, and I know there will be some proposals coming that will be documented.
Nobody's saying we're making any changes.
Right, but if you're allowing someone to have more of your ear and time to present their case even more thoroughly, it would make sense to allow other people to, to, if you're going to set their precedent. If you're not going to just say, "No, we got yours, you guys don't have to talk."
I guess that's new for us, because we've never had people come up to us and say, "We'd like to vote, make a proposal to change it."
Well, that was, well, here's what, here's what it was. At the town board meeting, we've been, for the last few months, been proposing that we have a wind ordinance committee for Towne Berry, made up of whoever wants to be on it, and try to get the best wind ordinances available to present. And we were shut down and said, "No," the town council said, "No, if you're going to do that, and you guys have been going to classes, and you know what needs to be done, and you guys are the best ones to make these decisions, we need to present it to you guys to say, 'Here's our, here's our presentation, this is what we feel should be the best way to protect the public.'" And that's what we were told to do.
Yeah.
That's why you're getting.
That's what that is all about.
I don't know. I, I know the one that Clear Skies is putting together isn't done yet.
So, this wouldn't be handled separately, it would be held as a conglomerate. Their proposal, your proposal, and they're all served.
Yeah, I don't know how you're going to, because I probably won't, won't get ours till next month.
We could bathe you up for quite a while.
Quite a while, yeah.
I have one more question. Wes, have you been approached by, by Heritage for the, for the sign lease? Have they, have they stopped by to see you at all?
No, I don't have enough property.
You don't have enough property, okay. Then I apologize, I regret my earlier statement. Tom, you have an answer? Did you find it?
Yep. Wes is going to read it. Is it okay?
As a, yep. As a point of disclosure, it is interesting the law does not require that a board member who has such an interest in an application must disqualify himself or herself from taking part in the discussion or decision concerning it. It only requires that his or her interest be disclosed. The burden of making that disclosure is on the application, not the municipal, not the municipal officer. While the state statute does not require disclosure of a board member in such a situation, there are cases and some opinions of Attorney General which have indicated that the qualification is nonetheless preferable route. And so, it goes on, "Do yourself and your board a service if you have any interest in all of, in an application. Even if the applicant is a personal friend or neighbor of yours, remove yourself from the board during discussions and vote on the application and take absolute no parts in the procedure concerning it."
That's no part, huh? And Tom, according to Berry, Tom quoted ethics, it says pretty much the same thing.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't say in here that you need to. It doesn't say it's a requirement, and it doesn't say that they can't be involved in the discussions. It only says that they, they should not be involved in the decision.
Right, and Berry quote, Berry, Tom quoted ethics says that that's the case as well, that they're not supposed to vote or, or take part in any decision made in the process.
You know, that's up to the town board to decide. They appointed.
Well, no, it's written, it's written down in town law.
I don't care what's, it's up to the town board to make that decision, John, so take it up with them. And if they want us to abstain from any discussion, fine. But I don't think we should have to make that decision.
Well, we're talking about doing the right thing here, and what's, in your heart, heart search, what's the right thing to do? And it says, you know, it discusses it in the Berry, do you have the copy of Berry quoted ethics and Berry, Tom quoted ethics?
I don't know, that would be out of zoning. So, I think, I think if the town board feels that anybody on the planning board should not participate in making a recommendation on a vote, then they should direct us accordingly. But again, other than the planning board making a recommendation to the town board, we don't have a decision, we don't hold the decision or hold the cards here on this issue, so.
Do, do, do you vote on the proposals, Tom?
We would, we would vote on the recommendation to the town board.
Then they would abstain from any vote?
I think we'll, we'll refer that to the town attorney. And ask him what his opinion is.
Knowing Kurt and knowing Gene, I think that they'll do what is right. I don't think we have to worry about it.
Just because we've signed, we still have questions too. So, just know that it's, I'm, I have questions, I don't know about Kurt, but I have questions, and I'm willing to ask them, so next month we'll find out.
As, for right now, as far as being involved in the discussions, we're not going to tell anyone that they can't be dealt. Lastly is the appointment of the member that we're missing on the board. As everybody knows, Paul Gillett passed away recently, and he was a member of the planning board, put a lot of effort into it. So, we're, we're having to replace him. We advertised for the position and received two letters, one from Steve and one from George, Steve Harley, one from George McCondon. Those, at the last planning board meeting, Steve Harley was present, and we went over some of the duties of a planning board member, and from the videotapes we have now, we went through those things that were discussed with Steve, and we put those on paper and shared them with yous, George, so that we didn't have any misunderstanding about what was discussed.
Yep.
So, the process for appointing a new person to the planning board is one that we've discussed, Wes and I have discussed, and we've also discussed it with Sean, and we're going to have an interview set up a week from tonight with both candidates and with some questions that we created that are equal for each one. And everybody on the board is going to be involved in the questions, and then we're going to do a reading process to score the, the applicants. So, that's, and that's going to be held in executive session because it's a decision that has the ability to be, it's, it's one of the things that they outlined that has the ability to be held privately, so that's our, that's our intention.
But we didn't get notes on it, even though it's all private, private. We do have, we have a right to have notes.
I don't believe there's, I don't believe that's required, Rob. The executive, New York State Open Meetings Law allows a board to hold a closed meeting or executive session.
I can bring you the federal law and state law. Any, any executive meeting, you still have to have notes, and they have to be made to the public.
The whole purpose of the executive session is to meet privately about a specific subject that does not need or should not be made part of public information. So, therefore, you do not need a secretary in there, you do not need to make it public record, otherwise, why would you go to executive session?
You, because there are certain things that you can own that, but you do have to have general information, and you do have to have notes.
General information is, he just gave, that is, they're going to go into executive session, interview candidates, and make a decision which one will fill that position. That's the general information.
I don't know, I'd have to check with my attorney, because he says you do, you do have to make notes, and you do have to give the time and the date of the meeting, who was there, and perspective of the meeting.
Okay, he just gave all of that.
But it's got to be in notes, I'm worried.
We'll, we'll, we'll consult the town attorney on that.
Yes.
And find out if meeting minutes are required.
I don't know, do you want me to get a public interview?
Is George going to do it, Stephen?
Yeah, we're, we have a, we have questions that we came up with that are going to be equal for both candidates, and everybody on the board's going to ask a question, and we're going to have a, a reading system and do it that way, so. And they're going to be based upon, the, the answers are going to be, you know, out of this book, which is the short course on, it's put out by the Planning Federation, so. That is.
Can I just bring up one more thing?
Yep.
And I can provide you a copy of this. I have, I have a document here, and some of them are valid, they're losses, but they're complaints to the Justice Department about what we had just discussed, and that's why the Attorney General is advising the people that have signed leases to stay out, and his last comment kind of sticks with me. And it's under the Sherman Anti-Trust Act, but I have copies of all of that here, and a lot of, a lot of the complaints are coming from local counties right here in New York. And if you'll, if you'll allow, I believe she can make copies of this, and I can, and you can have this before you leave. I'd like both of you to redo it, and also the zoning board as well for consideration anyway, in what we discussed earlier, if that's acceptable to you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
If I had extra copies, you'd get them, but I'm not, I'm on my last copy. Can you excuse that?
Do you have copies or scan it?
Yeah, why don't we just scan it out?
You didn't know what it was?
That's good for me, too.
The other thing, we don't know what leases, the leaseholders have signed, but I can, I have a copy of the lease that was offered, and it says in there that once you sign it, you can't say anything bad about effects. You know, you can't make an opinion, you can't have an opinion anymore. So, I don't know what that, you know, what the other one said, but that's something we can do.
So, if, I'll just item on our agenda and need a motion for adjournment.
Move for adjournment.
That's all right, yeah.